letting you back hundreds, sometimes thousands of dollars. But as Gil Reyes reports, the city may have figured out a way to fix LA's crumbling streets cheaper and more efficiently.
Community Street in Northridge becomes a testing ground for what could be a cheaper way to fix and maintain our roads.
Full reconstruction of a street like this one costs between $600,000 to $1 million per mile. This product, once again, we don't have a cost per square foot yet, but we know that it is significantly lower than resurfacing, let alone reconstruction.
Just a fraction of the cost, according to Street Services Director Nazario Sesseda. The new rubberized sealant is called Mix 1781, named after the year the city was founded. Though not a permanent fix, Petroleum Materials Innovation says their product can smooth over and preserve streets for up to 10 years after an application. That's longer than other street sealants, and good news for drivers.
We have people that commute much further today because of the housing costs here in Los Angeles just for a job. If they're commuting further on failed streets, it's costing them more in maintenance for their automobiles, and they can afford less. And that means that they can't pay rent or put food on the table because they're driving on failed streets.
Councilman Mitchell Englander says the product will be put to the test on this residential road over the next several months. If it holds up, look for other applications on busier streets citywide. In Northridge, I'm Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
Councilman Englander says the city has a 70-year backlog of failing streets in need of repair, and that we need more creative, cost-saving solutions to a $4 billion problem. Well, here's a chance for LA students to express their most artistic selves and get a chance at some scholarship prizes. The Getty Museum has teamed up with the L.A. Promise Fund to kick off a student art contest and get more Angelenos making and liking art. Anna Marcos takes us to Manuel Arts High School in South LA.
It's the start of the school day at Manuel Arts High School, and today, art of all kinds is on the curriculum. The Getty Museum's Pacific Standard Time LA &amp; LA Project aims to get museums and schools to spread the love of art so more Angelenos take part. This year's theme: Latino Art in LA.
I've loved this. A lot of kids are trying out the drums for the first time. It's just art. It's a way to express yourself. A lot of kids are suppressed from that.
The Getty Museum is partnering with the L.A. Promise Fund to kick off the student contest, where students themselves create art through spray painting, sketching, writing, music, spoken word, and digital media.
The competition is really centered around a prompt. "LA is blank. Am I LA?" So the answer to that can be funny, serious, sad, scary, controversial, political, and that's the whole point, is LA is something different to everybody.
Most of these kids have no idea yet what they're gonna do for a contest entry. And as you can see, I have no idea what I'm doing, but this certainly provides a lot of food for thought.
Some began brainstorming ideas on the spot.
If I had any, um, any ideas, it would be something with nature. I love nature.
Something about a kid that's from poverty, you know, making it out.
Sounds that you would hear from walking down the street in LA or walking around Manuel Arts. You would hear like so many different genres of music, and I would try to incorporate that into visual arts, so like, you know, through videos. And you would see like, wow, like, LA is just so diverse.
Sky's the limit in this contest. The art defined only by your own imagination. Some do it for the love of art, some for the $30,000 in scholarship prizes. Whichever it is, the contest runs through the fall, and any Angelino student can enter. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
For guidelines on the contest, visit lapromisefund.org/artsmatter. From appreciating art to appreciating Mother Nature, as a new water garden in Montecito Heights is helping students connect with the world around them. Rasha Goel has more.
It's an opportunity to explore the environment and connect with nature in Los Angeles. The new children's woodland native garden at the Ernest E. Debs Regional Park has been designed to give kids the chance to learn about saving water, the local habitat, and history of the Arroyo Seco region.
We're just cutting the ribbon on a new garden that will keep them in touch with their nature, with their history. It'll create an environment for people to have respite.
The Water Conservation Learning Garden is a collaboration between the Metropolitan Water District, L.A. Conservation Corps, and the Audubon Center at the park. The components of the 1,000-square-foot native garden also reflect an integral part of LA's history.
There's a hut that they had developed and created that is sort of a rendition of something that they used to live in. And then their mural behind them kind of showcases how they view the earth, from everything from the celestial to all the animals and stuff that they're used to, and of course, the native vegetation that now exists here.
This was an area, an area that where the Tongva lived and, and the resources with the LA River and the Arroyo Seco, the confluence, it was very rich in energy, but also resources.
Along with some lessons, kids also got the chance to kick around with L.A. Galaxy goalkeeper Brian Rowe. He recalls his experience of enjoying the outdoors while growing up.
This is kind of my refuge. Coming home from school is always great, going with friends to parks and just kind of playing around and just being outside. It's great.
Hopefully, this park will also leave these young ones with fond memories. But one thing's for sure: They are leaving today with an important message. I'm Rasha Goel for LA This Week.
If you own your own business, then you know how important it is to keep up with the latest technology. It sure is a lot of work, but the good news is that it doesn't have to be expensive. In fact, some of the technology can come free. Latina entrepreneurs and any new business owner for that matter learned a lot from a recent conference in downtown, a gathering where the word nerd is a compliment. Gil Reyes has more.
Daniela Lima is founder and CEO of For You, Buy You Fashion. The company designs what they call "the perfect garments."
We find out about the client's taste, lifestyle, and together we develop, it can be the one outfit or it can be the entire wardrobe.
Lima is one of the 100 or so mostly female business owners here for the Latina Nerd Tech and Business Workshop. In this case, nerd means tech expert, and that's a good thing. In California, Latina-owned businesses have surged 111% since the Great Recession. This forum, hosted by Latina nerd founder Zitlalik Ley, aims to ensure that women are knowledgeable about branding, marketing, and technology.
We need to ensure that our Latina community are aware of technology has a lot of power in their business. A lot of people are very scared to use it because they think, I don't know, they think it's very difficult to use it, and technology is also, is actually very easy to use.
She asked me to come and speak and teach people about opening up their business and learning how to ship their products, learning how to advertise and what places to go online.
Phil Pench of DHL E-Commerce urges business owners to take advantage of free social media for advertisement.
You need Instagram or Facebook, and how do you get those orders? What is your audience?
Another tip: Free website builders like Wix.com, which created the For You, Buy You site, by the way. And there are more pointers.
As everyone knows, cybercrime is on the, on the rise, so I will be talking about the types of different security issues and how to protect ourselves from cybercrime.
Business owners are urged to keep data encrypted, avoid storing sensitive information, and always use strong passwords to thwart hackers. All good tips at the conference, not to mention the chance to network.
The people that we speak to, so it's always a great opportunity.
At the second annual Latina Nerd Tech and Business Workshop, I'm Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
The event was supported by L.A. Mayor Eric Garcetti's Office of Economic Development. Well, LA is becoming more and more a bilingual city, and now one children's theater is going bilingual too. Anna Marcos takes us to a special performance of Aladdin in Councilmember Gil Sadio's district.
A little hocus pocus and a whole new Aladdin pops out of the genie bottle at the Los Angeles Theater Center. This is Disney's Aladdin Dual Language Edition.
This show is a little different than the Walt Disney Aladdin that we know.
More than 200 enthusiastic schoolkids have come to see the unique Spanish and English-themed show. The performance, put on with help from Councilmember Gil Sadio's office, helps honor the downtown area's bilingual flavor.
I think it's pretty cool, like, like everybody is gonna be able to, like, understand it, whether they know English or Spanish, or they don't both.
I'm forward to seeing all the actors dancing and singing, and it's just like really cool how there is in Spanish and in English.
Oh, but the plot in this Aladdin story thickens.
Jafar, the bad guy, he wished that this city of Agroba, which was bilingual, Spanish, English, he wished that only people in the palace could speak Spanish, people in the, in the towns could only speak English, so we could have more control. So when Aladdin meets Jasmine in the marketplace, they can't communicate.
But worry not, the lovers' animals are bilingual, and in the end, the couple falls in love in both languages. Even better, the audience comes away enriched by the power of love and a little more proficient in both English and Spanish. Oh yeah, and they even get a little red carpet time. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
A new residential high-rise will soon be taking shape in downtown LA, and it may be more affordable than you think. L.A. Mayor Eric Garcetti promotes the city as a top tourist destination, and Council President Herb Wesen wants to make it easier to do business in the city by connecting business leaders with city staff. All these stories in City B. A groundbreaking ceremony was held for a $300-million condominium skyscraper that a Chinese developer is building in the historic Broadway Theater District in downtown LA. The intersection at Broadway and Fourth Street is part of a six-block stretch of downtown that's home to a dozen movie theaters built between 1910 and 1931. The 35-story Perla condo and retail complex at 400 South Broadway is the Broadway District's first new residential high-rise since the turn of the century. Los Angeles City Councilman Jose Huizar has been spearheading efforts to rejuvenate the area over the last few years.
It's not the high-end luxury condos that we've seen come up. It's gonna be a mid-range so that people from all income levels could come and hopefully be able to live in one of the fastest-growing areas in, in Los Angeles.
Mayor Eric Garcetti gave remarks and was joined by Acting Mayor Chen Qing of Beijing, Ottawa Mayor Jim Watson, and other leaders from around the globe at the 2017 World Tourism Cities Federation Summit. The summit attracted about 400 delegates from 51 countries and 87 cities. The goal was to promote collaboration among the countries to further boost the tourism industry worldwide.
We all want visitors. We all want to show off our home, but we don't want extra traffic or extra pollution. And if we share the best practices of our cities together, we can welcome millions of people in our cities and in our countries, while at the same time doing well for the people who live there as well.
The Korean-American Chamber of Commerce of Los Angeles, Council President Herb Wesen and several other council members came together at City Hall for the second annual Meet the City. Wesen says the gathering provides an opportunity for community business leaders to meet city employees and learn how the city operates.
We represent you, and we want to make sure, as Council President said, it's about access, not just through me or the Council President or the mayor, but access through
It's a chance for LA students and teachers to discover their more theatrical side. L.A. Center Theater Group just received a Disney Musicals in Schools grant to help students tap, dance, and sing their way onto the stage. Anna Marcos joins us from the stage where some of the magic will happen. Anna?
Yana, we are not allowed to show you the stage here at the Mark Taper Forum due to union rules, but this grant will allow students from 10 L.A. Area Elementary Schools to get on a world-class stage over the next two years. It's taken over the stage in other cities, and now for the first time, the Disney Musicals in Schools grant will help the Center Theater Group bring more arts and theater to the stage at LA's elementary schools.
So it's about, you know, making sure that we have future artists and that they represent the diversity of our community.
The $100,000 grant will allow the Center Theater Group, which runs the Mark Taper and two other theaters, to train schoolteachers to mount, choreograph, and produce musical theater with their elementary school students. The schools will come from mostly LA's low-income areas.
It really supports teachers at their campuses becoming expert in mounting musicals. So even after the work with Center Theater Group is done, that program and that learning and that knowledge will live on at that school, and will have more and more generations of young people learning about musical theater, participating in musical theater, and hopefully becoming audiences for musical theater.
To cap off a year of theater learning, kids from each school will then perform a scene from their project at the world-renowned Mark Taper Forum, known for its cutting-edge performances like Zoot Suit. These Disney performances are no Zoot Suit, but they draw some very enthusiastic audiences.
It is a thrill for me to see what happens when these kids get on the stage and suddenly find that they're surrounded by theatrical production. They have all the lights, they have the sound, there's the video. It's very exciting for them.
Any L.A. USD or L.A. County school can be considered for the program, but if you're a teacher interested in applying, the deadline is coming up on October 5th. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
For more information, visit ctgla.org, scroll down the page, and click on Disney Musicals in Schools. Well, help keep your local parks clean by joining a neighborhood cleanup, take part in a 2K Walk Run while helping out a good cause, and it's that time again to explore your city on two wheels. All this and this week's things to do. Grab your sneakers and gloves and join your neighbors and friends for a Neighborhood Cleanup at Moon Canyon. The whole family is invited to take part. Do your part to help keep our parks clean. It all takes place Saturday, October 7th, from 9:00 to 11:00 a.m. at Moon Canyon, located at 911 North Museum Drive. Join the Village Family Services and Councilmember Paul Krikorian for a 2K Walk Run and Family Festival to raise awareness about youth homelessness. The event will provide a fun, low-cost activity for families, and the funds raised will direct children and youth toward community service and engagement. Here's your chance to show solidarity with the thousands of children and youth who call the streets their home each night. The festival takes place Sunday, October 8th, from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at North Hollywood Park. For more info, visit takeonestreets.com. Get ready for the annual Heart of LA Root as Siklavia returns to Chinatown, downtown LA, Echo Park, and Boyle Heights. Streets will be closed to cars and open for cyclists, pedestrians, runners, and skaters to use as a recreational space. The next Siklavia takes place Sunday, October 8th, from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. And that's a look at some things to do. Well, that's going to do it for this edition. I'm Yana Kane from all of us here at LA This Week. Thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA This Week.
The city of Los Angeles receives over 2 million 911 calls every year. Hello, I'm Mayor Eric Garcetti.
I'm Chief Charlie Beck. A significant number of 911 calls are not emergencies.
911 should be used for emergency calls, such as preservation of life, a crime in progress, prevention of a crime, or a public hazard.
If your call is not an emergency, such as a loud party, verbal dispute, public nuisance, or lost or missing property, you can dial 1-877-ASK-LAPD to have the police respond.
Remember, call 1-877-ASK-LAPD for non-emergency calls.
Los Angeles Police Department, what are you reporting?
Hi, I'm Gina Ray, and this is my dog, Whip It. We're from Winnetka. Get it, girl. You're watching LA City View, Channel 35. This is our city and our channel.
Good morning. It is Friday, October 6. Welcome to your Los Angeles City Council. We're very excited and pleased to be in the Valley today. Madam Clerk, we have a quorum. Would you please call the roll?
Bloomingfield, Bonin, Buscaino, Sadio, Englander, Harris Dawson, Weezer, Corretts, Cracoria, Martinez, O'Farro, Price, Rodriguez, Rue, Wesson, ten members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. First order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Okay, Ms. Martinez moves, Mr. Bonin second, next?
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Okay, Mr. Rue moves, Mr. Corretts seconds. That brings us where?
Item one is an item notice for a public hearing.
You have cards?
Yes, Mr. President, there are cards.
Let's hold that item and move on.
Items two through four are items for which public hearings have been held.
Okay, members, specials, I don't see any. Why don't we prepare then to vote on these items? Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Continue.
Items five through nine are items which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before us. Do you have cards on these items?
Yes, Mr. President, there are cards on five through nine, sir.
Okay, then move on.
Ten, on the continuation agenda, item ten is an item notice for a public hearing.
You have cards?
Yes, Mr. President, there are cards.
Okay, that brings us where?
That brings council to general public comments, items called special or presentation, sir.
Okay, why don't I defer to Mr. Rue? Mr. Rue, would you like to begin the day, so the floor is yours?
Good morning, colleagues. Today is a very, very special day because today is the 90th birthday of Sherman Oaks.
All right.
And we have the whole of Sherman Oaks joining us today, all the leaders. But in particular, I want to thank a few people who are here today and not here today. But Fran Kurzner, Chairwoman of the Sherman Oaks Chamber of Commerce, Leslie Elkin and Rose Day from the Sherman Oaks Bid, Richard Close, President and Jules Fair, Vice President of the Sherman Oaks Homeowners Association, and Jules, who was supposed to be here, he's out sick, but he is the honorary mayor of Sherman Oaks. And of course, I would also like to thank our very own Sherman Oaks Neighborhood Council, yes? Including, including its President, Ron Ziff, its first Vice President, Jeffrey Hartzell, Board Members, Richard Marsiniak and Howard Ketchin.
Yay, Howard!
And of course, the founder, one of the leading founders, and also Board Member and former past President, Jill Banks-Barratt.
Let's give him a round of applause. Thank you for all your service.
And today, as we celebrate the 90th birthday of Sherman Oaks, it is also the 15th birthday of the Sherman Oaks Neighborhood Council. And the history of Sherman Oaks is that 90 years ago, Moses Hazeltine Sherman came to this valley and divided the land that would eventually become Sherman Oaks as we love today. And today, Sherman Oaks has a lot to be proud of. It remains to be a beautiful community to work, live, and raise kids. And it is one of the most educated communities in Los Angeles County with 45% of its residents having a college degree or higher. And it continues to attract new businesses every year. And Sherman Oaks also has many fantastic businesses and restaurants like Corky's Down the Street, Carnival, Sugar Babies, which brought the cake today, and of course Casa Vega, who is joined here, and we're joined by Christina Vega and her husband, on behalf of our father Ray Vega, who is the founder who couldn't join us today. But the best thing about Sherman Oaks is its people. They are so warm, kind, friendly, and they also speak their mind. And Sherman Oaks is home to 50,000 residents, and each one of them cares about their city. They come together for their community, they look out for one another, and they fight for its future. Sherman Oaks will be coming together again at the Sherman Oaks Street Fair on October 15th, and hopefully everyone could join. It is a magnificent affair. We close on the whole street. I think over 60, I was gonna say 100,000, but you know, over 60,000 people come in attendance. But then again, but until then, until October 15th, I want to wish Sherman Oaks and its Neighborhood Council a very happy 90th birthday. So now I'd like to introduce my good friend, Ron Ziff, President of the Sherman Oaks Neighborhood Council, to give a few words. Ron?
Welcome, sir.
Thank you. On behalf of the community, I would like to thank the council for honoring us. Sherman Oaks is one of the most comfortable, relaxed, and best places in the city to live. We invite you all to move here. So, really, there's nice walkable shopping areas, hundreds of restaurants, and it is just really a great place where a lot of people get along very well together. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ron. And now I'd like to bring up Fran Kurzner, Chairwoman of the Sherman Oaks Chamber of Commerce, to say a few words.
Sometime last year, our CEO, Vicky Neuspom, met Tom Boulay, who was doing a historical project on Sherman Oaks. It came to their attention that the first document which named Sherman Oaks was a land lease dated October 1927. Realizing that this year, 2017, was the 90th birthday of Sherman Oaks, the chamber decided to capitalize on that theme for this year, starting with our kickoff event in March, our speakeasy-themed installation gala. From there, we expanded the theme with a 90th birthday logo on pole banners throughout the streets of Sherman Oaks. The chamber is thrilled that the other community groups decided to jump on the birthday train with us, including Notre Dame High School, which will be celebrating at their homecoming game next week, and of course, this event at the city council. And we will be climaxing the birthday year celebration with a very special event on the main stage of the Sherman Oaks Chamber Street Fair on Sunday, October 15th at 1:40 p.m. We are honored to have many of the local community groups such as SOHA and the Sherman Oaks Neighborhood Council, as well as local and state elected officials, both past and present, to join us to celebrate our great community. So, thank you for this honor, recognizing Sherman Oaks' 90th birthday.
Thank you, Fran. And now I'd like to introduce and pass the mic to Rose Day, who is the Board Member of the Sherman Oaks Business Improvement District.
Thank you very much. Happy birthday to Sherman Oaks, to all of you folks and all of us. I moved to Sherman Oaks in 2004, from Sydney, Australia, coming back home to California, and selected Sherman Oaks to live in because it's a fantastic place. Now, I regret that I wasn't present when Mr. Hazeltine purchased the Sherman Oaks for only $780,000. That's less than my first mortgage. So, but it was not except for the help of the community to expand Sherman Oaks to what it is today. I'm very proud as a member of the Business Improvement District to take part in the beautification of that area. Today, we have beautiful trees, we have wonderful median, we just lighted up the median with beautiful lights that we're going to be celebrating and bringing life to the area, thanks to our councilmen, thanks to all of the community leaders, because without them, Sherman Oaks would not have been what it is today. And I'm grateful to be living in this area and taking part in the improvement of Sherman Oaks Bid. Thank you very much.
And lastly, I'd like to have Chuck Betts, Board Member of the Sherman Oaks Homeowners Association, to speak. Chuck?
Yes, I'm representing Jules Fear because he can't be here today. Thank you, Council President Herb Wesson and council members for taking this time to celebrate the 90th anniversary of Sherman Oaks. My name is Chuck Betts. I am the Treasurer of the Sherman Oaks Homeowners Association. I am here to speak on behalf of Jules Fear, Honorary Mayor of Sherman Oaks, and Vice President of the Sherman Oaks Homeowners Association. He regrets that he cannot be here today. He is at home recovering from a cold. Councilmember David Rue, members of his staff, Sherman Oaks Homeowners Association, the Neighborhood Council, the Chamber of Commerce, and the Business Improvement Community, Business District, the community volunteers have put together what they believe to be a special and exciting anniversary celebration. It will take place at the 27th Annual Sherman Oaks Street Fair on Sunday, October 15th. Last, the street fair had an attendance of over 100,000 people last year. Another noteworthy anniversary event will take place on Friday evening, October 13th, at Notre Dame High School. On the football field, the pre-game homecoming celebration prior to the football game. Thanks, thank you again for recognizing this special anniversary.
Thank you, Chuck. And I know I said I was the last speaker, but you know what? It's the 90th birthday. It happens once every 90 years. So, I would actually call up the former President of the Sherman Oaks Neighborhood Council and also one of our commissioners on the Department of Water and Power, Jill Barratt, say a few words. Jill?
Welcome, Jill.
Good morning. Good morning, President Wesson and City Council members. This is really exciting to be here on the 90th birthday. Glad there's something older than I am. I wanted just to mention that just, I can't believe it's been 15 years since I put a small group together and said, "Let's organize a neighborhood council." I worked for 18 months to certify our council, and we finally became a certified neighborhood council. But over the years, we have proven the mission of neighborhood councils, and that is, we are the liaison between the community and government. And we've worked very closely with our city council members and with the heads of departments, and that's what we should be doing to improve our community. And we've really set the pace for other councils to follow. We had a pottery lottery, a pothole lottery, where we filled potholes that had not been filled in 20 and 30 years in Sherman Oaks. We did a tree giveaway. This is going to be our fourth year giving away trees to people. And now we've had the movies in the park. So, it's a great neighborhood council. We've had many development issues, controversial, but the thing is, we treat each other with civility and respect, and that's what really makes us a great neighborhood council. Thank you all very much. I hope to see you in another 15 years.
Thank you. And before I-
In fact, Mr. Rue, let me jump in if I may right now and recognize Mr. Paul Corretts.
I just want to say it was great having a chance to represent Sherman Oaks during part of my political career in the Assembly and part of my time on the city council. And it's been wonderful working with all the people that are active in Sherman Oaks and the Neighborhood Council and SOHA and the Bid and the Chamber. Challenging once in a while, but by and large, it was a great experience. And you guys do so much great work with the movies in the park and the street fair and all kinds of other stuff, the toy drive. And it's just a great community. So, it was my honor to represent it. I hope you think of me as your honorary representative even now. And have a great time and have a great festival and street fair. And best wishes to the folks that couldn't make it, to Jules and to Ray and to Richard. And I will be there at your next 90th birthday in 90 years. I promise you, I really will.
Mr. Bloomingfield.
Just in response, my colleague, I also want to put in a bid to be the honorary representative. I had the good fortune of representing you a part of Sherman Oaks when I was in the Assembly. So, you have a lot of folks who have very strong connections to Sherman Oaks. So, I just wanted to wish you basically a happy birthday and thank you, David, for bringing this forward. Congratulations.
So, and I just want to say this is really cool, and I too want to wish you a happy 90th. You don't look a day over 39. That the reason why Sherman Oaks is great is because the people are great. And it's just a perfect representation of the ones that are here today. So, I want to ask everybody in the council to, again, I mean, this is a great lot of folk here. Let's give them another round of applause for helping Los Angeles continue to be the best city in the nation.
I just need to thank David Rue, our City Councilman, for bringing us here and giving us this honor. He's really terrific City Councilman. Thank you so much.
Back to you, David.
Yes, and before I present this proclamation on behalf of all the council members in the City of Los Angeles, I also want to recognize our, give a shout out to our Captain Coranza of the Van Nuys Police Station.
Yeah.
When crime was spiking up, when petty crimes and thefts were spiking up, she rolled up her sleeves and literally gave out her cell phone number and spoke to every single resident. And now, crimes have gone down in Sherman Oaks, thanks to our captain. So, let's give her a round of applause.
And she's a good one, too.
Oh, so on behalf of the Los Angeles City Council and the City of Los Angeles, I'd like to present this resolution to all the community members of Sherman Oaks and congratulate them on a happy 90th birthday.
Happy birthday. So, again, happy birthday, Sherman Oaks. Members, I'm gonna start with some of our general public comment right now. So, I'm looking for Sean Murphy, Darryl Gale, Kevin Stevens, Melanie Algas. Please come forward. Sean, identify yourself.
Yeah. Good morning, President Herb. Sean Murphy, let me tell you, a lot of people are not very happy about this trash cutbacks. I went into the garage and I found unteamed boxes of trash. You need to go back and reexamine this. My landlady is so angry about the cutbacks in the trash. Thank you.
Thank you. So, if I could get the next speaker? Is this Ms. Algas? Please come forward. I'm looking for Darryl Gale, Kevin Stevens. Yes, ma'am.
Hello. I'm very much opposed to the Delta Tenneled Project. Are we going to perpetually believe that taking water from Northern California is the answer to our water problem? the answer to our water problems? Why don't we go full force on stormwater capture, put to work thousands of highly-paid local workers, preparing our aging, cleaning up our air, repairing our aging infrastructure, filtering groundwater with replenishment, and cleaning up our aquifers? Orange County is a great role model with groundwater replenishment. They use microfiltration, reverse osmosis, and UV light. I am a part of the Neighborhood Council for downtown, and they are opposed to it as well as the Highland Park Neighborhood Council and Councilman Weezer's district. We don't need more rate hikes, and we don't need an expensive project just because the governor and some multi-billionaire agribusiness is for it. Thank you.
Thank you. So, again, Darryl Gale, Kevin Stevens, Michelle Kaufman, Karen Renee, Leslie Woods, please come forward and just identify yourself. Yes, sir.
Hello. My name is Kevin Stevens. I'm a resident of North Hollywood. My wife and I have lived there for 14 years, homeowners, and we are Airbnb hosts, sharing our home. We started this a year ago. Both of us are self-employed, so we did this to supplement our income because we have two kids going to college in a few years, and it has been a real game changer for our family, providing us another stream of income, and it's been nothing but positive. They're supporting the local businesses. We don't live in a touristy area, so we're noticing that a lot of the, they're eating out food and they're ordering from all of our local vendors. Putting a cap on the amount of days that we could rent our unit out, we're at a 90% occupancy rate, so that's 27 or so days a month. To cut it down to 15 would be taking literally $1,000 or more away from our family each month. So, we really hope that you take into consideration families like us that are sharing our homes.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, please come and identify yourself.
Good morning. My name's Michelle Kaufman. I live in Woodland Hills, and I know you are thinking about this issue regarding Airbnb. It's been successful so far, like hopefully it has been in Europe for decades, being called a hostel. My daughter's college roommate moved on, and my daughter was studying for her master's and working and said, "I cannot move out." So, I told her that I would help her to rent out the extra or let guests stay at her extra room at the place she was staying. We have strict rules, no smoking, anything. Drinking is okay, not getting drunk, no guests, quiet after 11:00 PM and before 8:00 AM. And apparently, this is what our guests are looking for also, because we've never had a problem. Hosts leave reviews. Guests don't see those reviews.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, and I'm also, again, I'm looking for Candido, Joseph Bar Mettler, and yes.
Hi. Good morning. My name is Karen Renee, and I am an Airbnb host as well. I find that it's very important for my income and also to make sure that I can take care of my mortgage each month by hosting Airbnb. I think it's very important that we are allowed to do so, as well as for my guests. My current guest, right now, was evicted from their home, and this very nice young couple wouldn't have any place to go if they didn't have Airbnb to rely on. So, I urge the council to consider carefully the impact putting caps and so forth on Airbnb usage would have on just the regular people that use Airbnb. It's super important to my income. I'm a set painter, and I do well, but as a divorcee, I can't handle the mortgage all by myself. Thank you.
Thank you for taking the time to come down. Next speaker, please identify yourself.
Good morning. My name is Melanie August. I've been a homeowner in Woodland Hills for over 26 years. I'm here to urge you not to limit the number of days for owner-occupied home sharing. Without the additional income, my husband and I would not be able to keep current on our mortgage and medical bills. My husband suffered a major heart attack and spinal stroke three years ago, and he's on social security disability. I was laid off in 2009 after 17 years with an investment firm downtown, fortunate to find another job six months later, but at 50, you know, half of my salary. As owner-occupied host, we are not taking rental income off the market. There's no parties. We're there with our guests. We recommend local businesses, and the short-term occupancy tax provides much-needed income to the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please identify yourself.
Hello. I'm Leslie Woods. I live in Lake Belboa. I'm a homeowner and an Airbnb host. We became Airbnb host after my husband was laid off after 18 years of service with Time Warner Cable, and unfortunately, he's still unemployed. There's approximately 16,000 hosts in the Los Angeles area, and we generated $40 million in occupancy tax last year for the City of Los Angeles. Five million of that was used for homeless and low-income housing. The rest of it went towards public safety, street repair, and trash removal. In addition to it helping us save our mortgages and pay our rent and pay medical bills, I hope that you take into consideration the financial welfare of the thousands of Airbnb hosts that will be affected if you cap the days that we rent, and also the financial welfare of the City of Los Angeles, who is benefiting from this $40 million. Thank you.
Thank you. So, after Candido, I'm looking for Joseph Bar Mettler, again, Darryl Gale, Jennifer Hall, and Akiko Ellsworth. Yes, Candido.
Good morning, Mr. President, council members. Thank you very much for being here in Van Nuys and proud resident of the 12th District. You know, the tragedy in Las Vegas, again, our prayers go to all, but it's amazing how it's affected the community of Van Nuys. I was dealing with a company for over 10 years. They're a roofing company, and as I'm speaking, I'm asking about this one woman who normally talks to me, and to find out, she was there with her husband and her son. And here was someone that, Mr. President, that I had talked to for 10 years about business and never met her, but here she was impacted by that tragic incident. And again, we have to ask ourselves, what makes a person do that? A lot of times, when people are bullied, when people, we don't know what's the situation with this man, but something went wrong, and we need to make ourselves more aware of people who are in that condition. We can't let it happen again, Mr. President. And I know you folks will do everything you can to make sure it doesn't happen.
Thank you, and it's good to see you again. So, Joseph, I'm assuming Jennifer Hall, Akiko Ellsworth, Sarah, is it Jankowski? Please come forward. Yes, sir. Identify yourself.
I'm Joseph Bar Mettler. I reside in CD2 in Paul Krikorian's district, and speaking against items in the Housing Committee Propose Ordinance 14-1635-S2. I request that the council eliminate Section 331-2D. The RSOs are not eligible. It's an unfair stipulation that is prejudiced to the, to those fortunate to access affordable housing, a major issue the council are all very aware of. According to the HCIDLA, Housing Committee Investment Department, one out of two renters in Los Angeles reside in RSO residences. You are cutting out the little guy with this ordinance, those who do not earn in excess of $150,000 a year and cannot afford the inflated housing costs we are currently experiencing. In this area of the valley, it's reported that more than 60% are renters. Eliminate the rent stabilization stipulation and serve the renters who are the backbone of home sharing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. So, next speaker, please come up and identify yourself.
Hi. My name is Jennifer. I own a home in North Hollywood. I bought my home in 2007 when the prices were really high, and then five years later, I got one of those awful loans where my mortgage doubled, and I had to figure out how to pay for my house. So, I discovered Airbnb, and I started renting rooms in my house, and it helped me, but me being a single girl felt kind of weird having strangers come into my house. So, I wanted my own privacy, so I found a way for my renters, who also wanted to have their own privacy, to live in their own little unit in my house. And it's been really great. I've been able to afford my house, and I just, I need to have that fully rented to be able to afford my house, or it will, I will have to foreclose on my house. And also, I want to speak against needing to have the renter in your house, because I'd like to have my own privacy.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Hall. So, Akiko Ellsworth, Sarah, and Darryl Gale, Erwin Blanco, and I think it's a Thomas, is it Nichols? Yes, sir.
Good morning. My name is Akiko Ellsworth. We've owned our home for 13 years and an Airbnb host. I want to urge you guys to actually keep it open as far as the number of days we can host. I'm a teacher of girls and women's empowerment, how to protect themselves, and also an educator through entertainment, and this also helps supplement my income. It's also helped me and my former wife go through our separation without actually causing too much damage to our family, our child, and whatnot. It's been nothing but positive. We keep a very peaceful home, and the guests that come are very peaceful. In fact, one has helped call on suspicious activity in the neighborhood to the council as well, too. So, it's been nothing but positive. There's never been any problems, and it helps us keep contributing to our community. Thank you.
No, thank you, sir. Next, please come forward. Identify yourself.
Hi. My name is Sarah Jankowski. I own a house in Reseda. I bought it in 2010. I live alone. Roommates irritate me, so it's not that I'm taking rentals off the market. I won't have a permanent roommate, but I do get nervous living alone, and my dogs are not that tough. And so, having the Airbnb guests makes me feel comfortable. I love it. The extra income has allowed me to be free to start a small business that has been going very well. I live in Reseda, which is not a huge tourist town. I know that we're attracting, I'm attracting girls from like the Midwest that would not be able to afford to travel to LA, but then when they come to Reseda, they have a blast. I send them to all the local businesses. I'm sure it's great for the community. It's great for me. And then, on a broader scale, I had a bunch of Trump supporters. I'm a Bernie supporter. We got super tight. They stayed for a long time, and there's just a lot of great coming out of this. Thank you.
Thank you. So, if we could get Erwin Blanco, Darryl Gale, Thomas Nichols Vale, Pina De Rosa, and Ernie Moscoso? Makuso? Yes, sir.
My name is Sarah Win Blanco, and I own a house in North Hollywood. I'm married and family of six, and was about to lose my house last year, but a friend of mine told me about Airbnb, and it was like a miracle because I could keep my house. I know if they take Airbnb out of my house, I'm going to, I had to lose my house because I can't afford to pay. So, please do something about it. Thank you.
No, thank you, sir. So, next. Yes, identify yourself.
I'm Pina De Rosa. Good morning. I moved from Italy to Sherman Oaks, unlike Sydney, but still, I chose Sherman Oaks. I'm very happy with it. I've owned my home here for 15 years. One of your proud constituents. Happy birthday, Sherman Oaks. I'm a published author and a TEDx speaker, and I speak on sexual assault prevention on college campuses around the country, and I volunteer for the homeless and for animal organizations. And Airbnb allows me to do all of that. I'm a super host with five-star reviews, over 95% occupancy, and the impact that it allows me to make in the community, because I know my home is taken care of. I can give scholarships to the schools that can't afford that topic but need it, because it's the most underreported crime on college campuses. And I really urge you to remove the 180 cap for those of us who live at home and take care of our homes and take care of our guests. We wish to work together with you to absolutely regulate this and create it as a fair win-win, and we don't want nuisances either. So, thank you for the fairness.
Thank you for coming down. So, Adan Abada, Thomas Nicholas, Brenna. Brenna, you here? Come on. All right.
Hello. My name is Adan Abada. I'm a super host in Airbnb, and I want to tell you my own experience on Airbnb. I absolutely, it changed my life, and I also believe it changed many others, not just this city. Airbnb allowed people from all over the world to travel to places where hotels sometimes are too expensive, and I believe it's a game changer, and it balances the markets. I believe that my guests helped the city, and they provided a lot to the economy as well. I'm a YouTuber and an entrepreneur, and Airbnb allowed me to be here right now and to be able to do what I love so much. The cap will not only, it will be a thing that not correct to do, because Airbnb is used all over the world. People are also hosting me when I go and travel the world. So, yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. So, and also looking for Amy Schaefer and Stephen, is it Nuzinski? So, please come forward. Sir, please identify yourself.
Good morning. My name is Ernie Moscoso. I'm president of the North Hollywood Northeast Neighborhood Council.
Welcome.
Welcome. And we're here to welcome you to the valley again. We should be here more often, and I'm telling, I'm speaking on behalf of the council. We have been on record as being in opposition of the Delta Tunnels. I was lucky enough to be at a meeting for repower, and a learned person came up and spoke about the tunnels and said that the way to save water in our area was locally, and the way we want to do that is save our aquifers and spend the money on our neighborhood. When rates go up in our area, you will find that no one complains, they just pay. That's because we're underserved with regards to the people speaking up, and we need your help to stop the tunnels and save our money. Thank you.
Okay, Ernie, and good luck to the Neighborhood Council.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you for serving. Brenna, where are you? Thomas, Amy, Stephen? Hi.
Hello. Good morning, City Council. My name is Brenna Norton, Food and Water Watch, Consumer Watch Dog Nonprofit, looking out for the best interest of DWP ratepayers, about 20,000 members here in LA, and about 20 Neighborhood Councils across the city opposed to the Delta Tunnels. We need action by the City Council to oppose the tunnels and also the vote on Tuesday, which could devastate DWP ratepayers if the vote is allowed. This is your legacy. DWP ratepayers will be looking at you, Mayor Garcetti, and you, City Council, if they are submerged in debt with runaway rate hikes from the tunnels. They will ask, "Where was Mayor Garcetti? Where is City Council? Did they fight for us?" I want to thank Councilmember Martinez and the City Council for passing the motion on the tunnels and the strong specifics, but it will not stop the vote on Tuesday. We need council members to fight for LA. The vote on Tuesday actually commits funding and puts LA ratepayers on the hook. Please stand up for LA. This will be your legacy. Thank you.
Thank you. So, if I could, again, I'm looking for Thomas, Amy Schaefer, and Stephen Nuzinski, please come forward. Identify yourself.
Hello. I'm Amy Schaefer. I live in Lake Belboa. I'm an Airbnb host, and I've been hosting for five years. I'm an owner-occupied property, and I rent out my space about 350 days a year to people all over the world. My guests utilize all Lake Boa, all that Lake Belboa has to offer, the parks, local businesses, public transportation, to get to Universal, to Hollywood, all bringing revenue into our community. I've provided a space for gatherings, baby showers, anniversary parties, and I don't feel that I'm a threat to any of the hotels in the area. I've got tons of families who come to visit, their loved ones, and the only choice for them would be the Airtel Hotel by the Van Nuys Airport. On a personal note, Airbnb has gotten me through the most difficult time in my life through my divorce, where I fought to keep my home because of my love for Airbnb and hosting guests from all over the world. It's been very important to me and has helped me start over in life, and without the extra income, I'll be forced to sell. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now, is this Stephen? Please come forward.
Hello. I am Stephen Nuzinski. Bob Bloomingfield is my council member. And when talking about Airbnb and home sharing, one of the things he said is, "Don't throw out the baby with the bathwater." And I know I only have- And, um, I know I only have a very short period of time, I want to make, I've talked here a couple of times, and it has made a huge difference on our home, on our family, and we consider ourselves very responsible, home sharing. And what I'm basically want to say is that we have four million people in LA, we have almost five hundred square miles, you're trying to make one size fit all with the ordinance, and I think you just have to be very, very careful to protect the people who are responsible citizens contributing to our city. And punish the people who are the bad apples.
Thanks for coming down, Stephen. Okay, so that will close our regular general public comment, and I'm gonna go to the multi-section, which has a general, uh, public, uh, incorporated in that as well. So first, I'd like to call up Mr. Walsh, John Walsh, items one, five, six, seven, ten, and then your general public comment.
A, uh, long shot because you don't want to see my Jew face. Mr. Bonin doesn't want to see my Jew face.
No, 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 stay on the subject, uh, Mr.
Okay, the subject is why you have these long shots. Okay, public comment, number one, building and safety, you do a good job. I remember these people say, "You're all a bunch of crooks, you're, I'm a white man, we need white people." That's not me. You know who that is, but it's not me. Number, uh, number five, this is, uh, first, consider establishing a hearing date for street lighting, you do an excellent job on street lighting. When you do an excellent job, I'm the first to congratulate you. Legal, uh, number seven, outside counsel, you don't need outside counsel, you spend millions of dollars under Mike Fuhr, you can just shove that, uh, uh, outside coun, counsel up your ugly asses. No outside counsel, we haven't, we're paying enough, we don't need it. And then, uh, number ten, well, uh, that's another meeting. Okay, uh, I don't need every single second, I'll go into the, uh, one-minute public comment. Okay, what happened on, on September eighth of this year? During the meeting, there was an alarm, there was a fire alarm, the building was evacuated, and they found out that in the basement, that the pipes had burst, the pipes had burst, this whole, and when I asked, when we came back, what happened, this scumbag who's, uh, our, our president of the City Council threatened me. Not one of you goddamn persons has ever said why the building was evacuated. It's because the whole system is falling apart. The pipes are falling apart, everything is falling apart, and you don't give a shit about it, you scumbags, and that includes the new person on the board, the latest new scumbag, Rodriguez.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Walsh. Okay, Mr. Herman, items one, five, six, seven, eight, ten, and public comment.
In protest for the liens, I'd like to, um, have forgiven and forget, in fifteen slash zero-one-sixty S six, CD fifteen for the record, located at fifteen fifteen West Anaheim Street, a mere small amount of four thousand six hundred and thirty-one dollars and eighty-two cents to be fucking waived. And then I'm gonna go into item number five, on topic, CD fourteen, fucking street lightings and fucking ordinance for intentions of first consideration relative to the fucking establishment and fucking hearing day, fucking maintenance of fucking Colorado Boulevard Street Light District, item number five. Then am I going to item number seven? Well, we all know who runs the budget, Mr. Krikorian, and now he's asking for relative retraining of outside counsel? What do you mean by that? What do you mean? Well, let me take this off and give you a perspective for the so-called respect of legal counsel. Don't we have legal counsel through Mike Fuhr, LA City Attorney for Good Neighbor Laws and Tips in Keeping Los Angeles Livable, Livable? So why we have to hire outside counsel? We, we already paid Yao Williams seven-point-five million dollars on a bicycle accident because he slipped off his bike and became a quadriplegic. My God. Then I'm gonna go to item number eight. Who is it? Motion of, woo, and the scumbag fat bald fuck Jose Weeza relative to initiating a fucking process for fucking amendment, Academy fucking museums, sign district, fucking ordinance, and fucking corporate, fucking changes to include fucking settlement between, an agreement to fix a city, Academy, a motion picture arts and science. Well, let me tell you something. Woollett's versus Los Angeles, Barton versus Sacramento, and Armando Herman versus the City of Los Angeles, ADA Title II and Title III discrimination, fuck you! Because, again, a direct Department of City planning with the assistance of City Attorney to initiate the fucking process to fucking amend the fucking Academy Museum Sign fucking district. Now, is it in compliance for ADA? Is, is a sign situated where a person with a disability can either not hit it, maneuver around it, or so forth? No one knows! So the problem here, approved for June twenty-four, twenty-fifteen Museum Sign District to amend only as a law, fuck you! Follow the restrictions of the ADA twenty-ten standard, and then I can fucking forgive you. Other than that, you're full of shit.
Give him his one minute.
Now, general public comment, I have this to say regarding fifty-twelve Gerald Avenue, perjury on building permits by Mike Fuhr. It's on the record, five-zero-one-two Gerald Avenue, perjury, allowing someone with a swimming pool issue to be a scumbag and get away with it. But let me remind you again on the HHH, bitch, 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 and I'm talking about Measure H. Who would suffer the regressive consequences? The homeless. Why? Because the court in Olmsted recognized these very concerns describing adverse effects that occur when there is not approved housing. A hospital is not approved housings, do you fucking get it? Obviously you don't. So, in my final demise, I want to say, thank God Barbara is going to hell with me, I'm glad to see Ms. Hub die.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Bro.
Thank you, uh, very much, uh, Mr. Herman. Uh, you're disrupting the meeting, so do it one more time and you can leave. I'd like to call up Mr. Gus, and Mr. Gus, you'll wind up with three minutes, you have item seven, item nine, and then your general public comment minute.
Right. Uh, council members, regarding item number seven, retaining counsel, how come there's nothing in the council file that says why the employees need legal representation? How come there's no limit as far as how much money you're willing to spend on them? There is literally nothing in the council file, other than we're gonna retain attorneys for these city employees. You don't say why, you don't say how much, and I'm wondering, why did Mitch O'Farrell second this? Why would he second this if there's no information there? That's really, really troubling. Regarding item number nine, um, Forbes Magazine has a story out right now that talks about how LA is America's dirtiest city behind New York and Philadelphia. Of the people who say that their city is clean, LA finishes at the very bottom of the list. Regarding the presentation for Sherman Oaks' birthday, Mr. Rue is lying through his teeth. There was a series of burglaries in Sherman Oaks that I wrote about twice for City Watch, and Captain Carranza acknowledged that there was no police report taken. So Mr. Rue is lying through his teeth, and, and just as I say that, Mr. Rue exits. Mr. Rue's, Mr. Rue's office actually fabricated information that I will follow up on. I'll be glad to go to my general public comment now. Okay, council members, you have a big problem. This week at the PAWS Committee, there was a motion that said, "We have to find out why there's an influx of animals into animal services," which directly contradicts Mayor Garcetti's claim that impounds are down. Well, if impounds are down, why is the PAWS Committee saying that there's a big influx? Um, if Dakota Smith wasn't here, I know she steals my stories and fails to credit them, there are three things that you guys aren't aware of about animals that are coming into the city. When you tell people that LA is a no-kill city, they're gonna choose to abandon their animals here. And when you tell LA is a no-kill city and they want to adopt, they're gonna go to kill cities. This is a self-inflicted wound, and there's a dark circuit Ms. Barnett has not told you. People are taking animals from high-kill shelters and putting them here because they think LA is no-kill, and it's not.
Thank you, Mr. Previn. Mr. Previn, items one, five, seven, eight, nine, and your public comment.
Uh, thank you, sir, it's Eric Previn from the Third District, and today we'll start with item seven, which as you know is a request to hire some outside counsel, uh, including Shepherd Kim, who I do know the firm quite well, they represented, they were, Richard Droyen, who was the, um, implementation monitor over the Citizens Commission on Jail Violence, moved there from Munger Toll. So this is a very cozy government-style inside firm, um, and the reason why I think we're bringing them in, and we don't know this for sure, as the other speakers pointed out, there's not really that much information. It does involve, and you have to read it very carefully, um, some legal proceedings involving public works employees, it does not say representation of those particular employees. And it's my contention that the last twenty million dollars we've seen on bicycle-related claims settled by the City of Los Angeles, including Gabat and the Godevroy case, and then just yesterday, or two days ago, the Yao case, all of them stunning and hard-to-believe settlements. Um, there was testimony from city employees who had said in those cases, "Well, we have a bad situation because we phased out the big fixers, we just use little pothole machines now."
And Mr. President, the speaker is veered off topic.
Veer back, Mr. Previn, just veer back.
Okay, I'll veer back. So those firms, I believe, the private counsel.
Mr. Previn, just get back on item.
I am, the private counsel, that is the item, sir, seven, it's, we're hiring private counsel, just to refresh your memory, to help out.
Well, you, you've already had a minute on that subject, so move on to another one.
All right, well then, let's agree that I, I hit the money on the jackpot.
Just move on another subject.
Okay, I'll write about it, we'll get there later. I appreciate that, sir. So item number, um, one is the typical lien item, we're not gonna go there because it's, there's no time, but item number five, or, let's talk about the Buscaino beautification moment, just very briefly, because we do appreciate it. This is a holiday banner program, and the only thing missing from the great presentation and so on and so forth, uh, they even showed some of the pictures, was the price. So, we do remember, speaking of price, the ten-thousand-dollar banner program for the Jazz, and my recommendation that we reuse the banners, because it's a lot of money. Uh, here, we would at least like to know whether or not it's ten-thousand dollars, or if Buscaino has a bigger, uh, program that he's planning on rolling out. Um, and item number eight, sir, could you just identify that item for me? Or, no, I'll identify it for myself, let me just get there, these are so confusing. Uh, yeah, uh, item number eight is, oh, thank you for Mr. Rue, who's playing the role of mediator here. Um, he is mediating between the Academy Museum that's coming to town. Now, we've noticed that there are several museums coming to town, and there's one, uh, this weekend collides with the Cicluvia, that, um, they're having a Cicluvia this weekend, and the, I believe it's the ICA Museum, it's, it's free, and I really took notice of that, that's great. We'd like George Lucas to make sure, sir, and I know you're close to those folks, Melody Hobson and such, we want that museum to be free, and he needs to respond, because that's critically important.
Let's, uh, give him his one minute for general public comment.
So the one minute for general public comment, I want to just, uh, bring my view to the Airbnb thing. I think that, uh, Airbnb is a good company, uh, unlike Uber, which is heading toward automation, for those who are paying close attention, and they're gonna push all the drivers out of business. But Airbnb is actually stimulating entrepreneurship, and they want people to, you know, share their experiences, do all sorts of cool, you know, Bonin wants to take you down to show where he surfs, hundred-and-fifty bucks, it's all good. The, the problem with Airbnb is, is that it puts people, and owner-operators should be able to rent out up to two rooms, you know, that's fine, the cap is the question, I don't know, but one thing that's very important is that we not make it so that individuals who live in a, for a twelve-hundred dollars someplace are being pushed out of that housing in exchange for someone who can now turn it into a thirty-six-hundred-dollar moment. Now, I, I see the balance there, because some of these retirees make compelling cases, but if we limit it to two rooms, and you gotta be on the premises, I think we're in the right area, and a cap, it's not American, but thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Previn. So if we could get Mr. Spindler, item one, five, six, seven, eight, nine, and ten, and then your general public comment.
Turning to number seven, violation of the City Charter, Section two-seventy-two, Board of Public Works employees are going to blow the whistle on a major scandal. Since Kevin James took over the Board of Public Works as president, there have been thousands of work orders to fill potholes on streets that have not been done, or the city's been billed by contractors that have done a faulty job.
Mr. President, this doesn't seem related.
It's about the Board of.
No, wait a minute, wait a minute, you're not gonna holler in the mic, okay? Do you hear me? Hold it, stop, no, stop it. Stop, no, you're gonna stop right now, you were just informed that you were off topic. What I'm saying is get back on topic, holler again, and then I'm, we, we don't yell and scream, so just attempt to give your point, but stay on the item. Now start is time.
It's on the Board of Public Works being sued regarding their employees, I'm clearly on the topic. They are whistleblowers that are in the Department of Public Works, and they have to have outside counsel because Mike Bonin is conflicted, I mean, Mike Fuhr is conflicted under Section two-seventy-two of the charter. Major scandal coming, watch out. And the city attorney is using illegal tactics to suppress the fact that I'm expressing my constitutional right to say, "The Board of Public Works is absolutely gonna bankrupt the city by these faulty contracts." You've been letting these guys go out and charge the city for work that's never been done, or half-assed done, or not done at all, you know it, Mr. Fobble knows it, Mr. Fobble also knows that Mike Fuhr is a conflict of interest.
Move on to another item.
And they need outside counsel. So now, we get to item one, and we have a lien in CD number six, that's Nury Martinez, you know what we do. N-n-n-n-n-n-n-n-n-nury, n-n-n-n-n-n-n-n-n-nury. CD number six, the lien is three-thousand-eight-hundred-and-thirty-six dollars, that's too much money for the sixth district. You can charge that in the eleventh district, the fifth district, but CD six don't have the money. Waive the lien under one B, the person did clean up the property, everybody knows it, they went to the address, Oneida and Keywin, please waive the lien on number one, and if necessary, hire outside counsel to go over the legality of that illegal lien. Then we get the sign district at number eight, Academy Museum Sign District. Will you please let the movie stars pay for their own party? We are so tired every year of paying for extra money for the Academy Awards, make those studio motherfuckers start paying their way. They're hogging up the parking, they're hogging up the streets, and the reason they're doing it is because they know you're stupid enough to waive all the costs, we need a new leadership, stop this freebie.
Give him his one minute, general public comment, go ahead, Mr. Spindler.
First of all, we attempted to go get some of the cake that was here today from Sherman Oaks, however, I heard somebody had sneezed on the cake. Do not eat those pieces of cake, somebody apparently took all their snot and blew it onto that goddamn cake, it made me sick, I was gonna go get a piece of it, I hope you didn't eat that cake, 'cause if you ate that cake, it gonna make you sick, I don't know, please use proper health measures, it's a health violation, call the Department of Health, do not try to poison the people here as guests, I don't fucking appreciate that. Now, Mike Bonin. Buh-buh-buh-buh-buh-buh-buh-Bonin, buh-buh-buh-buh-buh-buh-buh-Bonin, being recalled, being recalled, seventy-five thousand dollars. Bonin, 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 being recalled, being recalled, seventy-five thousand dollars now we've raised for his recall. What did he do wrong? He committed the first sin of the Bible. He fucked with the Jews. Don't fuck with the Jews. Don't fuck with the Jews.
Your time is, your time has expired. Okay, Molly, I, I had already, here, come on, one minute. I'll reopen it for your, go ahead.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to really quickly flag that I submitted a letter for you all on the California water fix from Bob Schoonover. It's a letter that was sent to the Metropolitan Water District expressing our opposition to the California waters fix on behalf of our ninety-seven thousand members. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, let's bring up item one. Madam Clerk, we can vote on that item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
All right. We want to send items two, three, and four forthwith. Candido, are you still around? Why don't you come up on item seven so I can deal with that item?
Hold my time, please. Thank you. Uh, Mr. President, thank you for the opportunity to speak. Seven talks about hiring outside counsel for employees. Now, my concern is I want to protect the good employees. I want to protect those who are the whistleblowers, who are always there to do their job and who work for their pay. But if we're talking about those who inflict pain on the good employee of the City of Los Angeles, those who cause the conflict and the hurt and other issues with good employees, then it's, it's no good. But I know Mr. Fuhr, I worked with him when he was a council member, and I know he's an honorable man. But again, I hope we're protecting the good, dedicated employee. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay, now we can vote on items five through nine, five, and also I've got a request to send item seven forthwith. So on those items, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay, I have a few cards on item ten. So if I, I think I have Christopher McKinnon, Christopher McKinnon, if you're here, and Larry Johnson. Larry Johnson, please come forward, item ten. Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. This property in question is one of four island-shaped properties that were originally designed in the early nineteen hundreds to be public parks with no buildings for the enjoyment of all the neighbors. So many of us in the neighborhood are opposed to the twenty-foot vacation and hoping the full council will vote to receive and file effectively, putting this bad idea to rest. Thank you very much.
Okay, if I can have the next speaker, I believe, Mr. Johnson.
My name is Larry Johnson and I'm a neighbor on this property and I'd encourage you to vote no on this. It's not in the good interests of the neighborhood, it's going to create an eyesore. Like Chris just said, this was originally set up as a, as a parkway area and it's not being used that way. We just don't like it. It just doesn't make sense. We ask you to vote no.
Thank you, sir. All right, that concludes the public comment on that issue. Mr. Bonin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Usually, street vacations are fairly routine matters for us and most of them get approved. In this case, I agree with the community, I'm going to ask that we receive and file this one. This is not a routine street vacation, which is just a small sliver of land. This is a huge chunk of property that's currently in the public domain and it would effectively almost double the size of the private property adjacent to it and significantly increase the value of that property, which, which strikes me as an inappropriate gift to public funds. So I'm going to ask that we deny this by receiving and filing today. Thank you.
Okay, so on that item, that's, I second that, Mr. Bonin. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Nine ayes, one no.
Okay, so that will correct, will correct that vote, it does not change the outcome. Okay, Madam Clerk, what's before this body?
Counsel can go into the special meeting, sir.
So, let's go into the special?
Yes, let me call the roll. Bloomingfield, Bonin, Buscaino, Sidio, Englander, Harris, Dawson, Weezer, Corretts, Krikorian, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rodriguez, Rue, Wesson, ten members present and a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you. Yeah, go ahead, Mr. City Attorney.
Just for the record, there's a technical amending motion that was posted and distributed. It doesn't change the substance.
And so it's my understanding that public comment on the issue has been satisfied. Mr. Bonin.
There is one additional technical amendment to the one that has been circulated. The, the address that is listed is incorrect and it should be one-one-two-six-one West Santa Monica Boulevard. That's the address referenced in what will be item six of the revised recommendations.
Okay.
So.
No, you're disrupting the meeting.
So I would ask that we move the Budget and Finance Committee report as amended by the circulated motion and my verbal motion.
I'll second that. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourthwith, please.
Fourthwith. Okay, stop, you're disrupting, stop it, okay? So now, let's adjourn this meeting. Well, it's adjourned the number of votes. Ten ayes? Okay.
And fourthwith.
And so now we can adjourn, return to the regular. What is before the body?
Counsel has motions for posting a referral.
Okay, they are posted, they are referred. Any announcements, members? No announcements? If all would please rise for adjourning motions. Okay, Mr. Sergeant, I'll need you to remove Mr. Spindler and remove Mr. Herman for disrupting this meeting. We're going into the adjourning portion of our meeting. Mr., he's still disrupting, still disrupting the meeting.
And just for the record, I don't know if the speakers are picking up, Mr. Herman is again disrupting the meeting, shouting as he leaves. Indeed, we can still hear him.
Okay, so.
And we can, and now Mr. Spindler is doing it as he leaves. Indeed, he is delaying the meeting, walking slowly and shouting as he leaves. Still going, the police are still escorting him out as he disrupts the meeting.
Thank you. All right. I'm going to look to my right side to see if there are any adjourning motions. I'm going to recognize Mr. Paul Corretts.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to adjourn in memory of one of my favorite rock and roll artists, Tom Petty, the American musical icon who died abruptly of cardiac arrest this past Monday at UCLA Hospital in Santa Monica at age sixty-six. He was born in Gainesville, Florida, and caught the musical bug at age eleven after meeting Elvis Presley on a movie set, and in high school drew upon inspiration from The Beatles, The Byrds, and other sixties groups to begin forming his own bands. The best of them was Mudcrutch, whom he relocated with to Los Angeles in nineteen seventy-four. And while they weren't commercially successful, although they signed with Shelter Records, they formed the basis of The Heartbreakers, with whom Petty first recorded a debut album in nineteen seventy-six. Petty with The Heartbreakers and sometimes on his own went on to release eighteen albums, not to mention a couple more with the incredible but short-lived group The Traveling Wilburys, which included George Harrison, Bob Dylan, Jeff Lynne of ELO, and Roy Orbison. He also collaborated with Stevie Nicks, Lindsey Buckingham, Johnny Cash, and others in studio and on stage. He created a long list of classic and hit records, including Breakdown, American Girl, I Need to Know, Listen to Our Heart, Refugee, Don't Do Me Like That, Don't Come Around Here No More, I Won't Back Down, Free Falling, Running Down a Dream, Into the Great Wide Open, and Mary Jane's Last Dance, among many, many others. His largely guitar-based music drew upon classic influences, but always exhibited a fresh and varied sound. He also appeared in movies and on television and performed for a variety of social and political causes over the course of his career. Only a week before his untimely passing, Tom Petty and The Heartbreakers completed a national tour with three rousing shows at the Hollywood Bowl. One of his most memorable tunes, Free Falling, found him living in Reseda with a freeway running through the yard, moving west down Ventura Boulevard, gliding over Mulholland and watching vampires walk through the valley, in a striking characterization of his adopted hometown's notable landmarks. And the song concluded with, I'm going to free fall into nothing, going to leave this world for a while. Well, Tom Petty has left this world and is survived by his second wife, Dana York-Epperson, who he married in two thousand and one, his daughters, Adria and Anna Kim from his first marriage, his stepson Dylan from Dana's previous marriage, his brother Bruce, Bruce, and his granddaughter Everly. He will be missed, but his music will live on forever and may he rest in peace.
Thank you, Mr. Corretts. So I'm still looking to my right. I do not see any more adjourning motions to my right. To my left.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have some announcements, if I may. This Saturday.
Wait, let me just make sure, are there any other adjourning motions? Now let's go to Mr. Weezer.
This Saturday, we have our annual Eager Rock Music Festival in Eager Rock. We shut down Colorado with about twenty blocks of music, food, fun. We invite all to come out. It's a great way to celebrate community. And Sunday, we have Ciclavia hit downtown L.A. in Bull Heights once again, so come on down and get your roller skates, walk, bicycles, whatever makes you get from point A to point B. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Weezer. And I've been informed that Diana's birthday, your alleged deputy, she's sixteen today. Anyway, with that said, there are no many, no more announcements. Have a great day. This meeting's adjourned.